Stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which is stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in law.
Welcome everyone to the regular meeting of the Board of Trustees. We'll start with some announcements. First, there's a check that I signed that was over our $25,000 limit. That was $78,650 which went to Tom Buchi Excavating for various projects around the village for the DPW and curb repair. That was signed at the beginning of May. Next, make sure everyone's aware, they should be, that on Monday, Memorial Day, Monday, May 30th, at 10:45 a.m., the annual Memorial Day festivities, but observances will be happening on Main Street. So get there at 10:30 if you can, and we'll kick off exactly 10:45 a.m. Also, celebrate Irvington, it's coming up now, seems so far in the future, but Sunday, June 19th, also Father's Day, various things around the village. Connie, you want to say anything else?
Oh, very quickly, there are these little homo pieces that can go anywhere to anybody you know, just so that when they're thinking, "What should I do on Father's Day?", they answer it with, "Just come to Main Street Irvington", you know, bring your dad or not. But people should know that if they're little entrepreneurs who want to sell jewelry, set up a little card table, or sell lemonade, or perform, or play the guitar, or it's a beautiful day, just put up a table on the sidewalk using good judgment and good taste, we assume, as all Irvington folks would do anyway, and just add to the fun on Main Street. That's about it.
So I have one too, I guess.
Sure.
For those who haven't heard about it, the Traffic Committee, Irvington Traffic Committee, has announced is sponsoring a video contest for middle school and high schoolers, sixth grade through 12th grade, public service announcement about pedestrian safety. You know, your story, your theme, your images, whatever. The general theme overall is Walk Safe Irvington, and there's going to be some cash prizes, and the announcement's going to be on Celebrate Irvington.
By Irvington, 12 noon, by?
By the mayor, and at Village Hall. And, or at least we're hoping it. And let's see, what else can I tell you? There are instructions, you know, an entry form and the rules can be found at the Slow Down Irvington Facebook page, Slow Down Irvington on Facebook, or you can write to slowdownirvington@gmail.com and get stuff sent to you if you're interested in seeing the rules and the entry form. And I should say that the date, submission deadline is June 10th. I think that's Friday, June 10th, if I remember correctly. So hopefully, I'm looking forward to seeing what people, when they put on their RIP Director's hats, what they come up with.
Cool, very cool idea.
And then the last announcement is a public hearing on June 6th, 2016, at 7:00 p.m. at Village Hall. Consider local law, many chapter 213 of Village Hall, be it toll and traffic, to extend the 15 mile per hour school zone on Main Street. We discussed it last time, but I'll make a motion to have a public hearing. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
That's all I have for announcements. Now for correspondence, which there is a bumper crop of correspondence. I'm trying to summarize some of these. First one's from Eric Oli. He kind of gave an overview of Slow Down Irvington, some of the activities they've overtaken the last four months or so. One was working with the Irvington School District to interview and hire a coordinator of the walking school bus program. They made a presentation to Slow Down Hastings Board Meeting after they contacted the group about sharing any knowledge they had about starting the Slow Down Initiative. They also, Maura from the group is going to be presenting a overview of the walking school bus program to Slow Down Hastings, as well as, you know, they also brought the Irvington pace car, pace car idea to Hastings as well. They met with the representative from the Dobbs Ferry PTSA about starting a Dobbs Ferry pace car program. They've launched the PSA contest that Mark just talked about. So they've been doing a lot of work around town, and I know the entire board is very, very appreciative of the work that the group has done, and not only is this board appreciative, you can tell that all the Greenberg mayors are as well, since they kind of adopted our ideas for their Slow Down River towns, which is now in, you know, all throughout the River towns, as well as Sleepy Hollow and Elmsford, which I guess Elmsford's a honorary River town. But, you know, I've seen the signs, and it, you know, makes me proud of all the work that the Slow Down Irvington group's done, because a lot of it is just, you know, completely copied. It's been successful here in Irvington, so.
Although I have to say, they have a nice logo on their Slow Downs River towns, it's got palisades in the fall, so that's time. They have, trying to figure out what they do to replace the reclining rip.
Yeah.
But that's a good one.
Yeah, I think it was from Hastings, so they're especially happy and proud of their palisade view, so.
Yeah.
I'd like to see what Elmsford would have come up with.
Puddles.
Yeah.
I don't want to get emailed from people saying, "I hate Elmsford."
I get that about that sort of entire town. I like them both, too. Next, there's two letters from Margaret Pessek, is that how you say it? I don't want to say it wrong, so. There's a reference, it's against Astor Buck proposal. The first one is a letter, talks about her letter from July 21st, 2014, which was against the proposal. Re-sending the same letter to you and the current trustees, since once again, the issue has reared its ugly head, and we'd like to ensure that you're all aware of my feelings that most certainly have not changed. As a matter of fact, now more than ever, since we need to doubt the blow of my reassessment, the village needs to take a much more harder look. We want the approval of this parking lot with deferred damage property values in my neighborhood. I will mention also that all of his correspondence, since I'll be summarizing them all, since there's so many tonight, are available on the website with the agenda, and they're actually available in the back of the room. No, they're not in the back of the room with the agenda, but they're on the website. If anybody wants to read these, in full. Basically, the gist of her letter from 2014 was, she's firm opposition to having a parking lot built and rezoning the area for commercial use. She proposed parking lot be directly across the street, and she enjoys sitting outside, and it would make her quality of life worse. She sent another letter about the reassessment. I've taken the liberty of sending you the attached excerpts of a letter I recently sent to Tyler Associates as related to my obscene reassessment. A good portion of the letter relates to all good reasons why the village should pull the plug on the Astor Buck proposal, because the effect it would have on my immediate neighborhood should be approved. Please see now as to the letter I submitted to you earlier today. She basically, in her letter to Tyler, her reasons why her property should not have been assessed higher. Maple Street Parking, meters of workers from nearby Trent Building were parking all day on both sides of the street. There's South Buckout Extension, more problems created by the Trent Building seven days a week, all day, and sometimes all night, parking on either side of the driveway in points north and south, all because of the occupants of the Trent Building. From yoga studio that operates seven days a week, day and night, to a church that holds service on Wednesday nights and Sunday afternoons, to a Saturday night ban that holds practices usually with the windows open. Recently had the experience of coming home for lunch to find my car parked in my driveway with hazard lights flashing when no one responded to my horn blowing. Called police who tried for an hour, using a siren, attempted to contract Tusk Presser, having no success. The officer insisted I accompany him to home, checked there wasn't a burglary in progress. So someone from Trent had parked in her driveway. She also regularly experiences a war of a compact arriving at the Trent Building at 5:00 a.m. opposite her bedroom windows. Winter, black smoke belches from the smokestack of the building and penetrates into her house. When it snows, their landscapers arrive as early as 4:00 a.m. with snow blowers roaring. During the growing season, landscapers come mostly on Sunday mornings to cut grass completely with lawn mowers and blowers. Some years ago, there was a drug bust because someone working the Trent Building cultivated a garden of marijuana. My point here is the fact that in 1970, I purchased a home in a residential section of Irvington, that one could only hear the voices of children playing in the street and occasional bark of a dog or two. No longer say that she enjoys the peace and quality, quiet of a residential neighborhood. Allowing Astor Buck proposal to become reality for the Trent Building and its dwellers will be a huge mistake and part of the village of Irvington. Maureen Papel also is against the latest Astor Buck parking lot. She's increasingly disturbed by the tenor of the dialogue with Astor Buck. Since viewing the last work session, I feel compelled, once again, to vigorously oppose their 48-car parking lot and accommodate, it will acquire rezoning of nine residential lots to transfer the village-owned offer from its present location. Just referenced her letter, that was right back in 2014. It's very serious to rezon property from residential commercial, it's been given very little attention so far. All these issues have only grown since 2018 when the parking lot were first proposed, and then again in 2014. At the work session, the appealers seemed to be the leaders in the parking lot of foregoing conclusion. And once again, please the board reject any accommodation of required rezoning severely exacerbate the precedent ongoing issues of both the neighborhood and your village in Next one is from Maura Gedde, who is actually referenced in Eric Oli's letter, about safe routes to school program. Fifty-five schools take eight separate weekly routes to Dow's Lane. She also has several inexpensive ways to make Irvington more pedestrian-friendly. I'll hit on the top level. The dangerous condition, the sidewalk on the private course that goes down Dow's Lane Road, we've talked about that in the past. Dangerous approach to Dow's Lane past Memorial Athletic Fields, cross wops and signage on village-controlled streets that cross the aqueduct, better blind curve warnings for drivers on West Sunny Side Lane, motorists speeding down Arsdale Avenue West towards the train station. Then there are...
Can I just interrupt for a second?
Sure, I'd say there's about 100 signatures that have contributed to her recommendations.
Are you going to be possibly get just that, one email sent to the Traffic Committee, so we can roll it into that recommendations list for you?
Sure.
Thanks.
Next, letters from Cheryl and David Brandwee. We are ready to voice our vehement opposition to petition filed by Astor Buck to rezon nine residential lots on South Buckout Street into commercial property in order to build a 48-car parking lot. Proposal will permanently alter the essential residential character of our neighborhood. Under Village Coning, proposed use shall not be hazardous or inconvenient or incongruous with the residential district or conflict with normal traffic of the neighborhood. Parking lot in this location will significantly impact drainage, create traffic congestion, noise and light pollution. We now promise the pocket park to make up for the negative implications of zoning change. We feel that a pocket park would further depreciate the quality of our lives by increasing foot traffic to otherwise quiet residential enclave. Furthermore, we like to be undesirable consequences, creating a parking lot to be isolated part of our street that will potentially require increased police fire and DPW services. Ask yourselves to be done due diligence by exploring all available alternative locations for Astor Buck's parking lot. Be legitimate, existing alternatives. First, there's large undeveloped tract adjacent to Department Building in South Astor. Better permit use of the area for parking could now result in having two parking areas in some future data Buckout land zone is changed for commercial use. Second, there's a gray parking structure located at 50 South Buckout, solely partially used. Third, there's viable alternatives to selling the village-owned property where the Department Public Works located. Have you assured yourselves that the creation of parking lot on South Buckout Street will actually improve Astor Buck's parking laws, so they have permanently changed our neighborhood's character without even solving the traffic and parking problems in the area? If passes prologue, Astor Buck will fail to maintain its parking lot, its pocket park, and anything else that's built on those lots. We should not sell our souls to get them to pay for sidewalk or any other safety enhancements. Astor Buck has already voiced its objection to providing permanent maintenance service to the area in question. We are clearly not the most affluent area in Irvington, but we feel like the village trustees have an obligation to protect this neighborhood just like any other. Next one is from Ryan Tunstall. Please attach your letter response to petition filed to rezon the lot identified as to Astor Street, adjacent to 50 South Buckout. While some progress has been made on the revised design of the proposed parking lot, I still believe there are concerns that need to be addressed and these is provost considered and granted. As adjacent property owner, I am concerned with the rezoning, the parking lot, design and use, potential future use of surrounding commercial buildings, and potential negative impacts on the surrounding residential area. I understand complexity, the issue, the difficult balance that must be struck with those who already have and those who plan on investing in this community. Hope you'll take my comments concerning consideration, you've done very wisely. I think, here's some of his specifics from Ryan Tunstall. Consider prior to any approval restrictive covenant on use, the design, the traffic direction and flow, the use of two South Astor Street proposed parking lot, compensation, leased parking from MTA, mass transit, sidewalks, and parking, unfortunately, for the big, high level concerns. Next is from Danny and Sylvia Greenberg. They're voicing their vehement opposition to petition filed by Astor Buck. Proposal will permanently alter the essential residential character of the neighborhood. Zoning laws, community's guide to its future development. Some of it's repetitive from another one earlier. Chris Wall is the next one. Ask the Board of Trustees to review the slated business use in Astor Buck properties, original application to change industrial zoning, support and remind ourselves how we got here before we determined the fairness application. See, the applicant has pushed the envelope of intended use without providing necessary combinations for its growth, and now wants us to fix their problems. Along 48 car, and there's also a, she also included her letter to the editor of The Enterprise, basically saying it's hard to install a patio, place that a basketball hoop, but we're willing to consider a change in zoning for a commercial business. Those were all the correspondence. We got at least one other from Kevin Gallagher that came after the deadline, but that'll be the next, the next meeting. So those were all the correspondence that we had, my brief version of them all. But again, they're all online, if anybody would like to read them in full, and they're all obviously in the official record. I will now open it up to public comment. Three minutes. Anybody want to talk?
Can we read our letters in their underbridge?
If you'd like to.
Okay, thank you.
I'm actually not going to talk about Astor Buck. Surprise. Although I will say that when you jokingly referred to the five or so people watching these televised hearings, I was thinking, those are all the people on Buckout Street watching, because I think you know where we stand. But I just wanted to briefly commend you on, in the work session, on the issue of solar panels that came up, and in particular Mayor Smith, you made a very bold statement about solar panels, and you'd like to have one on every house in Irvington besides the octagon house. I agree. All of my neighbors have solar panels, and I don't find them at all offensive. In fact, I see promise in those solar panels that we are doing something to stop the very, very challenging issue of climate change that's hopefully going to, hopefully we're doing something that will help us, help our children to enjoy the planet as much as we have. I also wanted to commend Jenna Silverberg for her comments on the solar panel issue, because I've been working for the past year with the Green Policy Task Force for the Village of Irvington, and we very much appreciate your bringing to the board's attention our public policy, which we believe the public policy import is certainly far outweighs the aesthetics and whether people are going to, you know, have a eyesore. I don't see anything eyesore about them. Okay, that's all, thank you.
I think like the octagon house, if you're out of way to make it blend in.
What you're supposed to do on houses like that is put them in, rock, palm, park, or back by the woods somewhere where they have a clear view, and they're out of the way, you're not changing the architecture.
Right. Until you can just use roofing tiles that can't tell the difference, right?
Hi, Kristen Wall, 58 West Clinton Avenue. I am here to talk about the Astor Buck Properties' application to create a parking lot on South Buckout for 48 cars. I was on the board during one of the times that they petitioned this municipality with this application. I believe they have been petitioning since 2008, at least that's when the survey was from. For example, in August of 2014, we have a letter here from the planning board regarding this application. Do you guys have this? Was this provided to you?
We should get it passed.
Okay. Because it's still just as relevant today as it was in 2014. And then, of course, there's another one from August 2015. So our municipality has been spending a lot of time on this application, to the point where when mom says no, we ask dad, then he says no, he gets remarried, we ask the new lady. It's taking up a lot of time. It's time to make a decision. Of course, you know where I stand on this decision. I think that, I know that they have a problem, they have 160 cars to accommodate. So this 48-car parking lot, permanent asphalt, almost an acre, is just a Band-Aid for their real problem. And I think what we need to address is, instead of saying, well, we have a business, and businesses are great, and they pay tax, you know, property taxes, which actually, they sue for surcharge annually and win, so let's not get too excited about those property taxes. But the other thing that I think is really important is how did that business get there? And was it ever supposed to be so big? And was it ever supposed to have 160 cars worth of employees there? And the answer is no. Our predecessors, when they changed that zoning to allow the business to push up against that residential neighborhood, actually be kind of in the middle of it, because it's residential on one side, right? Somebody's pushing up. The concept was for them to provide businesses for use of people in the village, for patronage, for you go eat a meal for two hours and you leave, you go get your nails done and you leave, you get a massage, or go to the spa, and you leave, you go to yoga class and you leave. Never was the vision, I don't believe our predecessors, actually I know for a fact, was to have people go there and work and leave their car outside for eight hours. So I really think before we, you know, feel sorry for them, we should think about that maybe, as I said in my letter, they pushed the envelope for what the intent was of our predecessors to allow them to do business in that neighborhood, and now are complaining that they don't have enough room for all their cars. And I, paving 0.8 acres in a residential neighborhood, changing the zoning, and then to business and the paving, I think is, I think it's outrageous, and I think it's unfair to residents in this community. And it's all the residents, too. It goes to a carbon footprint, they can do something else, or they can change their business model. Thank you.
Anybody else want to comment?
Just say one more thing.
Sure.
I'd just like to second everything Chris said. I've lived on Buckout Street only six years, but it just feels very Davy and Goliath on Buckout Street right now. We, we don't have much power, we're, you know, like I said in my letter, not the most affluent section of Irvington by a long shot. And it feels like there's this giddy enthusiasm to make these guys a parking lot at our expense, and I just, I really hope that we can slow down. I know it's already taken a long time, but, but there has to be other options for, for this project. It just seems like you're going to destroy our neighborhood. It's our single biggest investment of our lives. I have two kids that are seven years old, twins, that, you know, this is it, this is what we have. And when I see this back on the agenda, I feel like I want to cry, and it gives me a pit in my stomach, and, you know, if this keeps going on, they'll be here to testify against it as well. So, thank you. Cheryl Brown, line I should say, 85 South Buckout Street.
Anybody else? Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Anyone have any questions or comments on these? If not, I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Approval of Contract 201612 with Calgee Construction Company for the Construction Manager Services for the Irvington Town Hall Restoration Project. Do you want to throw up this one, Larry?
Yeah, I mean, this is, we are bringing in a construction manager to assist us with the town hall project, given the difficulty we've been having with the contractor. So that's, that's it, in a nutshell.
So I guess I had a couple of questions about it.
Sure.
Which is, how does this impact what we're paying the contractor? Does any of these, are they being charged any penalties or fees for the fact that we have to bring in a construction manager to make them do their work?
I think we have a matter on executive session tonight to discuss that with you.
Okay.
Give you more background on all the legalities of it.
Right, because I'm a little bit concerned that now, you know, it's the other part about it that's a little concerning or disconcerting, it's just that, it's a, the way I read it, it's a blank check right now. There's no upper limit to what this contract is, is authorized for.
What I asked Larry to do is we're going to put in a speed bump, for lack of a better term, you know, what that number is, I think we probably should talk about, I thought maybe $20,000 or $25,000, that if it gets close to that, Larry will say, hang on, before it's done, we'll come back to the board.
But is that sufficient? I mean, yes, that's a great thing, that's like a signal flag, a flare that goes up and says, wow, this is going to be even more complicated. Is that enough?
It'll have to be. It'll have to do.
Well, I don't know.
Well, I don't know either, that's the problem. It doesn't, we don't know what the final resolution would be on this, on this project. But let's set a $25,000 milestone, and then we'll go from there. Or maybe we don't get there, if we're lucky.
Yeah, okay.
So we can just add that in?
Add that to the resolution.
To the resolution, as per?
Yeah, with the limit of $25,000. Mary Ann, you can tell me if you think my language is saying with the limit of $25,000 on payments.
Let me see what the, how the resolution should be ordered.
And then we would, we could certainly revisit and discuss with them.
Yes.
Find out what has been done, what hasn't been done, what's happening, and begin on it. Oh, I see, I'm sorry, there's all the resolutions here to the consent agenda, okay.
Yeah, the resolution's pretty short.
Who's the contract with Calgee Construction Company?
What have they done for us in the past?
Can you go under compensation and payment, just to get into that paragraph?
On the design?
I think that's just going to a resolution.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's easier to put it in a resolution than to have to do the contract, yeah. And so Brian, what were you suggesting?
I was just thinking, adding to the final line, after the Eske Set Agreement with the limit of $25,000.
That's fine, it's perfectly clear what you mean.
$25,000 in payments, or something like that.
Until further approval by the board.
Which would require further approval of the board. So resolve to approve Contract 201612 with Calgee Construction Company for consulting services relating to Irvington Town Hall Restoration Project, authorizing village administrator to execute said agreement with a limit $25,000 in payments without further consultation with the Board of Trustees. I'll make the motion, can I have a second? All in favor? Approval of the Village Attorney Retainer Agreement. Wait, I missed one, sorry, fireworks. Fireworks. I guess the discussion, I mean, this is the standard approval. I think the part that requires a little further discussion is, in the last four years, John? Three years? Four years? Five years?
For payment coming from outside?
Yeah.
Four.
Last four years. The full payment for the fireworks portion of the Fourth of July celebration has come from the FACE Committee and private fundraising. Right now, FACE doesn't have enough money to pay for the fireworks, as well as, you know, fireworks aren't the only thing that FACE pays for. So we expect, we hope, some money from FACE. I will also donate my salary this year towards fireworks, and I think we also got a resident donated $1,000 towards fireworks. So the problem is, we don't know the exact number FACE can contribute at this time. We know we're going to be short of $17,000. I know personally, I, coming to, you know, the end of, the end of May and Memorial Day, I don't want to announce that we're canceling this year's fireworks, so any shortfall will have to be made up for from the village budget. I think next year, we'll discuss, you know, as part of the budget process, fireworks, but at this late stage, you know, I'd like us to find the extra, you know, whatever's five, seven, $10,000 in the, in the village's budget this year, so.
Just to be clear, that's only for the actual fireworks initiatives themselves, because there's still police and fire department, and ambulance corps, overtime, or whatever.
Yeah, well, that's, we already have that in the budget, for the police and the, and the DPW. The ambulance corps and fire department are volunteering. Except for gas money, I guess, for the vehicles. But, man, that's just kind of, that's my take, I don't know if anyone has a different take. But to me, it's just... But to me, it's just, it would be, I think, a pretty lousy thing to cancel the fireworks now. We'll have a bigger discussion, Joe, next year, when budget time comes, about putting it back in your budget, if you want private fundraise, if you want to move the fireworks to the Oktoberfest event, which might be cheaper, so we'll have a lot of options. I just think at this, this late in the game, I just don't want to cancel them this year.
We should still say that we're open for contributions, right?
We are open, if anyone would like to help us offset the cost of the fireworks, we are open to that as well.
I am, yeah, I appreciate the generosity that we've heard about already, and yours as well, Mr. Mayor. But I would support going forward with this, approving this contract this year. And, you know, as you said, look, let's look next year and see what the options are. But I'd like to go forward with it.
We're getting $25,665 shells. They're going to be fired off, that sounds pretty good.
I promised to count them.
Yeah, exactly, make sure we get them all, Joe. But, if there's any more discussion on this. But resolved to approve contract 201617 with Garden State Fireworks Inc. for the fireworks display, July 4th, 2016. Authorize Village Administrator to execute the contract. I will make the motion, can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I won't actually be here, I'll be out of the country. Someone's videotaped. Review of capital budget, Larry. Oh, jeez. Village Attorney, jeez, I keep checking them off before I get them. I'm jumping the gun tonight. My understanding is that everything's exactly the same?
Yeah.
Can you review it?
I can't review a own contract.
Yeah, it looked the same to me, it looks like the pricing's the same, too.
Same rates.
Anyone have questions? I'd like to thank you for the review of my service.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Resolved to approve the retainer agreement 201613 with the firm Stashitz, Murphy &amp; Lammers, LLP, providing for an hourly rate of $145 an hour for basic retainer services, $190 an hour for services outside the basic retainer, and authorize the mayor to execute said agreement. I'll make a motion, can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? You don't have to jump ahead anymore, review of the capital budget?
So this is just a, you know, an initial draft that you're looking at. We're not asking you for your approval of this tonight, but just, we thought we could at least have a chance to walk through this with you. Given that we could not do this at the previous work session, I think you remember, that was a fairly lengthy agenda, so. I didn't even have, didn't even have the nerve to add it to that agenda. So we'll look at it this evening. The document that you have, and I think there's a copy, copies in the back, we summarize our capital needs by going to our departments, having our departments look at their long-term needs in terms of capital expenditures, infrastructure investment, and equipment replacement, and then other large-scale projects. And we summarize it in this document. I won't walk through every single page with this, with you, but there are some key pages that are important to the way we look at this. The very first page that's here is a, we break out our debt service into water and non-water. The water debt service is paid only by the water funds, which is only paid by rate payers, water users, which is why we need to keep that separate. The non-water debt service, which is the more significant piece of this typically, is what flows through the general tax levy. So this has a direct impact on the tax rate and what pressure or lack of pressure you'll feel in any given year from these capital expenditures on the tax rate. So we do, we do take a very hard look at what our existing debt service is and how our existing debt service is retired over time. And what we try to do, as best we can, is lay out our projects and try to time them in a way that works best with our existing debt service that is being retired over time. So the culmination of all that is that very first page graph that you see there, which shows you the existing debt service in the lighter shade bar. And then the darker bar is what we call the recommended capital budget at this point, the debt service associated with that being laid in there. And, of course, it's not flat the way we'd like it, or even facing downward, but it's, there's reasons for that. Skipping forward, there's detailed schedules that list out all of the, all of the underlying calculations that lead to that graph. Certainly, you're welcome to look at those on your own time, but that's, the graph is the representation of all those tables. So skipping forward past all those, all of those amortization tables, there's a, the very first schedule here is a document called Project Listing by Fiscal Year. It's the very first sideways page that's in here. And this summarizes, just like it said, by fiscal year, all of the capital projects and equipment replacement that is identified by each of our departments. And it's the debt service that is created by these projects, should they be approved, that eventually flows in and through the tax rate. So any project you approve now will be borrowed for in this upcoming fiscal year, 2016-17, that begins in a couple of weeks, a week. And the debt service for that will flow through the 2017-18 budget. So the decisions you make now directly impact the tax rate for next year, which, of course, now, you know, there's tax cap implications and whatnot, which is why it's important to analyze this on an annual basis, but most particularly right now. So I'm happy to go through, I don't think I need to necessarily go through project by project, but if, certainly, there's typical, one other explanation, I'm sorry. The way this schedule is laid out is that there may be, there may be projects that cost $130,000, $150,000, but either none of it or only a portion of it is being bonded. That happens when there's grant money that's being used in addition to bonded money. It happens when money is set aside in the operating budget to pay for these capital expenditures. So, for example, you'll see in the DPW, and you'll see it in an annual, on an annual basis, you'll see what we simply call infrastructure maintenance, which is a $130,000 line item that's in our operating budget on an annual basis to address drainage repairs, sidewalk repairs, curb repairs, a whole variety of capital infrastructure projects. That's in the operating budget, which allows us to not need to borrow for those types of projects. We put them on this schedule because they are capital projects, but they don't necessarily contribute to the amount of borrowing that we have to do. So if you're interested in the exact amount of borrowing that will eventually impact the tax rate, it's the column that says to be bonded. So with that in mind, again, there's, in Clerk Treasurer's Department, there's a computer upgrade that's necessary. The last upgrade was 2010. So we're on a basically five-year schedule, which is probably pretty high. But it's overdue. In Public Works, we have equipment replacement primarily, as well as our annual additional paving amount. The paving that's shown here, which is $110,000, is in addition to the amount that we receive annually from New York State for our Capital Highway Program, CHIPS Program, which is about $93,000, I think it's up to. So the total amount of paving that we're looking to do in this upcoming year is about $200,000. And that's in addition to the paving that wasn't completed last year. You probably recall, or maybe you don't recall, that none of the paving was done from last year. The contractor did not get to it in time by November 15th. And so we basically pulled that work from them. And we're going to include that in this bid coming up with the other Greenberg villages, the joint bid that we do. But this is in addition to the, to last year's paving as well.
So if we have ideas about capital projects that aren't in here, is this a time that we want to hear about them? Or we should throw them out, or?
No, absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because I have, I have a couple of things that have been on my mind. It had been discussed in various ways, but I can go ahead?
Sure.
But I don't know how this comes down in terms of capital budget, but the most exciting project that we heard about, about the microgrid project, which had so much potential, you know, and a lot of, you know, Janice and I heard that, and many, you know, I know Mark and Brian know a lot about this, too. It seemed like an important environmental effort. It seemed like a, you know, a resiliency, emergency services. It had the advantage, if it were manifested in the way we heard it, that it would actually bury a lot of overhead wires, storm resiliency. I don't know where Hitachi is now on that, but if it requires some major expenditure, that's something that I would like to explore further. I'm just calling it the microgrid project. I'm not sure how it pans out or what the particular thing is.
Right, yeah. We applied, we're in the process of applying for the second phase of the funding, right?
That's to be determined. We had a conference call two weeks ago about, with the folks at Hitachi. They admitted to us that the numbers that they ran were probably not as rosy as what they presented at the library in the initial report. So they did have a chance to refine some of their numbers. Doesn't mean it's bad, but it's not as good. I'll summarize it this way. We need to, at some point, make a determination as to whether we're even going to go after the second round. Because the second round is highly competitive, and we have, and there's a significant investment involved in that. I mean, you know, there's a match, a village match associated with it. I mean, it's not a small number. So we have to decide whether it's even worth us going after that, given the odds. My sense from the phone call was that it's not going to be worth it.
You know.
Not, that's not final determination by any means, but it's, that was the sense that I got from it.
They put, they pointed out two things, one of which is that, in order to, if I remember correctly, in order to submit for the second phase funding, you have to provide a lot of additional information that isn't required in a normal, if you were doing a business with someone like Hitachi Energy Services. So it actually ends up to be significant. They were, if I remember correctly, were they saying something like, on the order of $400,000 worth of extra work in terms of?
That they ordinarily wouldn't do, that NYSERA happens to require.
So that upfront makes it more expensive to actually gear your work toward a submission to NYSERA versus gear your work toward a project.
That you might not actually get.
Right, and so that was the second point that they made, was, the real problem is, when you look at who's probably going to get funding for actual shovel-ready stuff, which would be Phase Three, it would probably not be high-end communities along the river, like Irvington. It would probably be other communities that would seem to be more disadvantaged and needing more public's.
Funds, yeah.
To support the effort. So with that said, and it gets down to being anywhere from only eight to 12, eight to 15 projects out of, you know, what was, which was 80. Yeah. So they were really trying to pull us off our, you know, unicorns instead of saying, doesn't look, you know, doesn't look like Irving's, Irvington is the type of community that would actually end up with a grant, no matter how good the proposal was. And because of that, then you had a question, do you want to put that extra $400,000 into the proposal to gear it toward NYSERA? Or do you want to do something that's geared toward working with a public-private partnership?
Well, that, yeah.
Yeah, so, right.
I guess mine.
Let me summarize it this way, because it can get exceptionally complicated and not, you know, probably the right time to go into all the details. But the summary of it is this. There is probably a number out there that would need to be invested or to supplement the project with outside funding, whether it's NYSERA, whether it's Village of Irvington, there's some number that would need to be invested in the project to have it, to make it have an appropriate return on investment so that it would be a viable project. We've asked them to come back to us with what that number is. It's probably $1 million, which is actually not a number that scares me totally. The reason it's not in the capital budget is that it's just too preliminary to even put a number like that down. You know what I mean? But as soon as we have more information and it becomes more realistic to even start thinking about it, I, for one, would love to be able to see how that type of a project with those types of benefits could actually happen for what I think might be a modest investment, relatively speaking, to the scope of what's going on. So, anyway.
Well, that's, what I'm expressing is support in some manner that reveals itself. And if it requires a capital budget investment, I'm putting my mark of approval on that to hope that we could do something one way or another through Hitachi or through some other, anyway. Okay, but the other thing on the same, let me just finish just a couple of quick things. The other thing that has come up in various discussion, and it's both an environmental issue and it's a practical issue, and that is, we don't have any kind of commuter van run on a clean, with a clean energy vehicle that could alleviate some of the congestion that is such a problem on Broadway at rush hour, at school delivery time. And when we discuss various issues, you know, the issue of how much, how much time it takes to, you know, make the two blocks on Broadway and then get down Main Street, and then people are rushing, and that's creating this issue of safety. So I'd like to look into what kind of, I mean, I'm calling them clean energy commuter vans for the purpose that would, that would help safety and congestion and, you know, has all kinds of positives. So keep that as a discussion. And the other one is the.
We would actually, we would run the van?
Well, we would, what would it take? You'd have to buy it, you'd have to?
We'd have to have someone that operates it.
Yeah, this is an operating budget issue, frankly.
So there's, but there's the buying of it.
Oh, yeah, yeah, but that's, that's actually the easy part. The harder part is the, is the model.
Or there's, you know, some connection, you know, once you have it physically, you know, or maybe there's some grant money for that. But it's a kind of long-range project that I, I thought about this in '09 when I first looked at the congestion and what other communities do all over the place.
Just related to that, I think maybe if we are going to pursue something like that, a first step would be to do some kind of community survey as to whether anybody would actually use it.
Right.
Because I have real questions about that.
Yeah, but I, you know, it's like, if you don't, if you give people that choice and you, it makes it, because the negative becomes worse and worse. The negative is, not only it takes 20 minutes, it now takes 30 minutes to get to the train. And, you know, maybe there are incentives. Anyway, the other thing is the whole expense of looking at the location of the DPW, the fire department, you know, which is a long-range project that takes a lot of money, has been discussed in various ways. But somewhere, to me, there's some part of the capital budget for that, and.
Connie, that's, if you look under 2021 budget, there's a chunk of money for the firehouse replacement. I don't think that that, it's not, you know, it's a ballpark figure. I mean, I don't think it's anywhere.
It's placeholder.
Place, yeah.
So fire, so fire department, which we talked about for a while, and the issue of that whole revamp of the DPW area. that whole revamp of the DPW area and what might happen there. So I, it might be buried in here already, but.
No, the firehouse is there. Nothing else is there.
Okay. And then various projects related to the theater that, you know, we've discussed.
Air conditioning is in there.
Yeah. It's a different version of the theater thing.
Yeah, I think that, I mean, to me, the, the most immediate of them is with the, you know, kind of obviously the early, the early innings or early stages, I guess, would be better for a theater. Of looking at, you know, we're doing the entrance and talking to, you know, some of the folks involved in that project, they're talking about looking at not just kind of doing the entryway, but if we're going to do that, why don't we do a feasibility study, larger feasibility study, not just for building the entrance, but what expanded services can you provide? And I think that the air conditioning goes along with that, you know, and I think that they, they estimated it, you know, at say $50,000, $60,000 for a full study that, you know, they could see what the payback would be of, of getting air conditioning, of getting a, a entryway that might have like a, a special, you know, area where you can have a VIP reception or something like that as well. So I know that that's a project that, you know, we're looking at kind of, I think they, they would anticipate fundraising for a lot of the actual fiscal improvements, but it's hard to fundraise for feasibility stuff, you know, project because, you know, you're saying, once you have the feasibility study, you can say we want to fundraise for this goal, but I think it's hard to, you know, we kind of have to think if we want to look at something like that and put up some seed money upfront. You know, I think that the theater's been, you know, kind of, they haven't asked for a lot of things in the capital budget recently, you know, so I think that it's, I think that's something we should consider in the final capital budget for this year is at least a portion of that feasibility study.
Is that capital budget or is that operational budget?
No, no, the capital.
Well, I was gonna, I was just really concerned that I know we got the grant for some of the, from the, the bridge money grant, right? I guess it was.
Yeah, but that's only for really the outside plaza area, the outside corner.
Right. So we don't have to spend that right away? I mean, we can?
Well, next summer is, not this coming summer, but the one after.
So it's.
No, but I mean, there's, it's actually, it goes out even further than that, it's five years.
Yeah, I just don't want to see, you know, have a design, you put in, start putting in pavers and then you realize you got to rip everything out because of a new design for an entry.
Yeah, no.
You know what I'm saying?
They would definitely be coordinated.
Yeah.
But that's also why I think we should think about doing, you know, maybe the feasibility stuff sooner rather than later so we can, you know.
Coordinate it to.
Exactly, exactly. So, you know, for the, for the final version, I think we should look at that. One, not housekeeping, but one appearance of the next version of this, if we could add a few of the previous years, maybe the last five years to the chart, say on the front, or the graph on the front, so we can see where we are. You know, we have been in the last five or six years, five years, so from 2012 forward, yes, the actuals and then we can see the trends and things.
Yep.
I'm sure, I'm sure you cut it off because it got too big.
I was just trying to keep you in the dark.
[laughing].
One other quick thing, sorry, the, the, one project that we have to look at, and I, I had intended on moving from 2018, I believe it's 2018, 19. So it's on this schedule, yeah, on page eight of this particular schedule we're working on. Halsey Pond repairs. I think the intention was to move that forward to this coming fiscal year, 16, 17, on the basis that we do have, I believe we do have an engineering report or will finalize an engineering report, and we believe that there are some important repairs that have to be made to the, to the spillway dam at Halsey Pond, the upper dam mainly, there's some of the lower work as well. So I'll piece that all together, but I just wanted to point that out. So these numbers are going to change anyway, but.
Is, is it going to have any kind of dredging to the main pond itself or is that still not?
I don't know. Did they talk dredging?
Yes, towards the, the area where Legend Hollow runs, comes down and we have those streams where we, we plan on clearing and opening those up to have better flow come into the pond, which will improve the pond's health a great deal. But Legend Hollow left, they had to dredge the pond years ago and that's when we had some really good years. So that end of the pond, the, which is the eastern end of the pond, would get substantial dredging.
And some filter, refilter grass planted?
I would think so, absolutely.
Because otherwise, you know, you can't just do it mechanically, it's got to be a biologic solution.
Yep.
To really make that work.
It's why it's an engineering project.
So I had a couple of questions. Janice, do you want to? I'm the only one? Left, I was going to give Janice her due, but okay. So one question I had was, I'm looking at, I had some very specific ones, but I'm looking at the water fund debt service and seeing it go up quite high in, in 2021 period. And what I'm wondering in 2020, 2021.
Where are you looking, Mark?
I'm looking at water fund debt service, the second chart.
Yeah, the first, the first graph is shown is the non-water and then about.
Non-water and then?
About four or five pages later, after all those tables, there's another graph.
Okay, got it.
So I know there's a lot of infrastructural stuff that has to get done, but I'm just wondering what this implies in terms of the water rates.
Yep.
I mean, are we going to see a, a sharp increase during that period of time?
Well.
I know, I'm, I'm just, just pretend there's going to be a grant, whatever the increase that's been coming from New York City, no matter what, has it been 3% a year or something?
None, some years higher, yeah. Five, five to eight.
It's an, there's an increasing water inflation no matter what, so what happens at the confluence of the two streams, shall we say?
So to speak. Yeah, so look, the, the amounts, I know the graph looks pretty stark. The amounts that you're talking about here are, you know, $150,000 or a little less of, of additional debt service for the water fund to absorb.
Or it looks like $2,000, but whatever. So anyways, so it's some number that's less than a million.
Right.
Yeah.
But, but in, in one year, so, yeah, it's way, it's far less than a million.
Yeah, far less, so good.
You know, the water fund has revenues of two, 2.2 million in revenue, so if there's a, if, if this in fact holds and there's a, a $200,000 increase in debt service in one year, that implies a slightly less than 10% effect on the rates. That being said, that, that project that's driving this particular increase in debt service out in that year is a project that isn't even in design stage yet. It's a project that we, we believe needs to be done and, but hasn't, there's been no engineering work done on it.
Is that the mountain road?
The mountain road, yeah. So it may be that the project is either phased in some way so that the increases are not as drastic or that we can work with the existing debt service a little bit better. So that kind of fine tuning still has to happen.
Because we're already trying to pay down existing debt from, in the water service, right?
An existing deficit, yeah.
Deficit.
Yeah. Which is, I mean, it's different, conceptually, it's different, but, and that pay down of the deficit is built into the, the numbers of, of the budget for the water fund. In other words, we have a $150,000 set aside, off the top of my head, it was around in that range, maybe a little higher, I think it might have been increased slightly, set aside that's earmarked for deficit reduction on an annual basis, all things being equal. But, so no, this, this increase, there's no doubt that this graph, although it looks stark, the numbers are not insurmountable, but they're also, I don't think, going to stay exactly like this. Our goal is not to have, you know, a, a 2% increase one year, a zero another, and then all of a sudden 10% one, one year. We'd like to try to smooth things out as best we can, and we do that on the, on the village side as much as we can.
Right. I mean, the concern, of course, is that there's always water conservation, but even then people need a certain fixed amount of water depending on the size of household and everything else, so, you know, we know we're all facing tax, a tax squeeze and now it's going to be a cost of water squeeze and, you know.
Yeah, well, our, the goal here is to identify projects that we, we believe need to be done so that we're not in a position of being surprised. But having it here on a schedule like this, when it's engineered, when there's more fine-tuned information gathered, we can, we can then fine tune the financing of it better. We did that for the town hall, for example. We, we borrowed, you know, the town hall is a $1.7 million project and we didn't have a $1.7 million project in one year. We, we did 700, I forgot the exact numbers, a million one year, 700 in the next door, maybe it was reversed. So it, it allowed us to gradually take on the debt service. You eventually get to the upper level, but it allows you to phase it in.
So, okay, so my other is comprehensive plan, we know we want to, we think that, we were talking about having a focused, focusing on very specific areas like.
Yeah.
Specifically larger parcels, but some, there'll probably be a few other areas that, so is that something that's in the capital budget or is that something that comes out of operational?
Well, it can be borrowed for. It's a, it's a, it's a purpose that's specifically authorized by New York State.
We don't know how big of an animal it is yet.
We don't know yet, yeah. And so, in fact, we were talking about it a little bit earlier today, the, we're right now working on getting a handle on exactly what that process is going to be and what consulting fees we may need to take on in order to complete it. So we should have better information as we go along here. Mary Ann and I have had good conversations about this. I think Mary Ann suggested a very good way forward that we're going to be implementing in terms of at least gathering the necessary information. But once we know that number, the, the question is, does it belong in a capital budget or not? And the, and the answer to that is it depends on how, how large an effort it is.
So then the other, my, my traditional comments have always been about the sustainability factor and because just looking at the capital budget, you really, there's not enough here to really let you understand what some of the underlying decisions are, but as always, I have to make the, you know, mom and apple pie type of statement that the departments, especially DPW, I think, and the Parks Department, where possible, should be looking at their vehicle fleet. Those things can actually start changing from being diesel-powered to being something else. Certain things, obviously, dump trucks, you know, front loaders, you're not going to be able to convert those very quickly, but certain things, but other things like general utility pickup trucks, satellite garbage trucks, I mean, I could think of a number of things, even official vehicles that aren't considered to be police chase vehicles could all have alternative, could all be going toward alternative energy. It may cost different than the, than what's in the budget, but in the long run, you know, part of the goal of the sustainability goals and the Climate Smart Community pledge is to riddle away at municipal costs, impacts on, on, you know, carbon emissions, et cetera, et cetera. So we, so I just have to keep saying that because, you know.
I understand.
You know, Greg's here, we say it to him face to face, but it's just a constant reminder for everyone to, to double-check their thinking about this stuff. At some point, it's going to be, I mean, right now, I understand it's much more difficult because there may not be, you know, facility for hydrogen fuel or whatever, you know, fuel cell use, whatever, whatever it is that's being used at the larger compressed gas, whatever's being used in some of the larger vehicles. And then the other thing was just, you know, we've had this ongoing thing about facilities upgrades and monitoring, and I always just like to say facilities dude just because it's such an absurd name, but anyways, in this context. But the point is that, you know, when you look at the buildings, you're looking at energy reduction through new lighting, through automated lighting that goes off when you leave the room. You look at upgrading heating systems and more spot heating, you're looking at insulation and all of that. So I know there've been some spot checks of this building, but I'm not sure that it always seems like everything seems more diffuse. I don't know if, how much of a broader analysis has been done across all the facilities.
So I've been challenged by that whole thing for a while, you know that. I, I tried to. I tried to get with a consultant that could analyze where our current energy usage is and, and put it on to other similar facilities so that we knew where we are starting from in terms of fit, of energy efficiency, and I've done that with limited success. I did it for this building, at least to experiment to see if it could work. I, I, I'll continue to try to find a consultant that can do it correctly and do, and get us the information we need so that we can set our goals appropriately. Doesn't make sense to say that we can reduce our energy usage by, or our carbon footprint or whatever, by 30% when we're already very efficient, or maybe we're not very efficient and we can't, so it's.
Likewise, you can't really set a goal for facilities upgrade if you don't know what it's going to take. You know, I'm not, not a percentage goal, but you can't set a capital budget unless you know what, what you're trying to do, so.
Well, but we've had, but we've had energy performance studies over the years, and as you know, going back to 2008, which aspects of that that we've implemented and there's more that we have upcoming, we're working, we have a big going out very soon about upgrading and retrofitting all the interior lighting to LED. So I mean, they're, you know, so little by little, we're getting to, to implement those.
So it'd be the final, I feel like I'm beating a dead LED right now, but is it, could we get help from somewhere in order to try to figure out what kinds of, what consulting services would be best?
I can try to consult with Sustainable Westchester to see if they can be.
Well, that's what I'm, you know, they're now the go-to people. Maybe they can help us figure out, cut through based on experience with other municipalities. I don't know, I'm just, because it could impact capital budget, I guess that's my point.
Right.
Long-winded waves there.
Okay.
What else? Any other? Can we take this up again? Well, I think, you know, we'll, we'll try to incorporate some of the comments that we heard tonight and we can come back with, with another draft of this at the, at the next meeting, which is only a week and a half from now.
Okay, very good.
You know, we'll see, hopefully right after that, that'll be much closer and we can get that adopted and move forward with, you know, bond resolutions and all the other work that's done after that. All right?
Good.
Thank you.
Solar and the senior center.
Trustee liaison report, I don't see anything.
Okay, you usually have me go first.
Yes, we'll start down there. We can mix it up if you like.
No, I've already talked about the traffic committee, the, the only other, you know, well, the environmental committees are obviously always open for more people, the tree commission, which meets twice a month and on a Tuesday, and then the environmental conservation board, which meets the last Thursday of the month, are looking and would be, would love to hear from people who might be interested in coming to a meeting and seeing what goes on and perhaps volunteering.
Good. We'll do Christina's recreation report at the end.
Go for it. You want to go first?
I'm going to go first with that.
Go ahead.
The Recreation and Parks Advisory Committee will be meeting on Wednesday, June 15th at 7:30 PM in the senior center. Irvington Face Committee is meeting Wednesday night, June 1st at 7:30 PM in the senior center. The Community Advisory Board will be meeting on Tuesday, June 7th at 8 AM in the senior center. Day camp registration continues. Please note that fees change and they go up on May. Contact Maureen DePolly for additional information. The 2016 Teenscape Summer Travel Camp is ongoing, has ongoing registration. Please contact Angela Thornton for additional information on dates and fees and what we have planned for our teens this summer. 2016 Village Park passes are available, proof of residency is required. Special thanks to everyone who attended the Face Committee Spring Fest at Madison Park held on Saturday, May 14th. We battled wind and rain and still managed to have a great time. Maria Kashkian, all the Face Committee deserves credit for providing the community with such a great event. Did anyone say Rocktoberfest? Please remember that the senior center, hope I read that well, Joe, especially because you're here. Please remember that senior center and the Ohio Nature Center are available for rentals for family and social events. Contact Laura Chupman for the senior center for information regarding the senior center rentals and Maureen DePolly for Ohio Nature Center rentals. Irvington Woods Committee held a great event for the community at the Ohio Nature Center on Saturday, May 7th. Forty families and over 150. Forty families and over 150 participants made flower and herb boxes. Garden tours and trail hikes were also provided along with many animals from the Greenberg Nature Center. Thanks to Nikki Cottington and the members of the IWC for their help with the day. Special thanks to Maureen DePolly and Rick Rizzulo for making the day possible. Riverkeeper Sweep was held Saturday morning, May 7th. Twenty volunteers worked with Parks Department to clean areas in Scenic Hudson and Madison Park. They collected 25 bags of trash, lots of plastic bottles, and a giant tarp. Did you reuse the tarp, Joe, at Spring Fest?
Yes.
The Irvington PBA will be holding their second Hudson River Sleep Under the Stars event on Saturday night, June 25th, in Scenic Hudson Park. Over 100 are signed up to be part of this fun event. That's in Scenic Hudson, or that's in Madison?
It's Madison.
Okay, just trying to confuse me, because then it says Madison Park will be closed to the public from 5 PM on Saturday, June 25th until Sunday, June 26th, at 10 AM. So the Hudson River Sleep Under the Stars is June 25th in Madison Park. The Recreation and Parks Department, IWC, will sponsor the day at the O'Hara Nature Center this Friday, May 27th, from 9 AM till noon. Special thanks to Art PAC member Allison Felix for organizing the event. Congratulations to Mayor Brian Smith and the caring committee of Eileen Fisher, who will both be honored by the Westchester County Recreation and Parks Society in their annual awards luncheon scheduled for Friday, June 10th, at the Shenner Rock Shore Club, Shore Club Beach Club in Ryan, New York. If you'd like to attend, please contact Laura Chutman at the Rec Department. The Irvington Woods Committee and the Irvington Recreation and Parks Advisory Committee would like to remind residents that dogs must be on leash while on the Irvington trails. Dogs off leash are a danger to trail users, the habitat, and wildlife in the woods. We tend to receive numerous complaints found encounters between dog users, I'm sorry, trail users and owners with their dogs off leash. Please follow the law and keep your dog on leash at all times. Well said, Joe. Can I?
Okay. The Housing Committee is planning to meet on June 14th. They have a lot of analysis of the, the in-law have been dealing with here, and I suspect they want to look at that very carefully, our recent draft. But I also want to report a very important discussion we had at that meeting the last time we met, and that was an analysis of the mission statement of the Housing Committee. There's a, there's a mission of the Housing Committee to make housing available to moderate-income individuals in the Village, important goal. The, the addition to the mission statement will include make, make, make and keep housing available to moderate-income individuals. This is an important emphasis, given a lot of the current issues that moderate-income folks who already are here face in order to stay in Irvington. So that mission statement will be adjusted. I met with the Theater Commission, we've heard a lot about that discussion already. I met with a new chamber, Larry also, met with the Chamber of Commerce, a very enthusiastic woman, Samantha, I'm going to look up her last...
Edelick.
Yeah, I'll look it up, yes.
Edelick, sorry.
Correct. Who was very anxious to help out in all kinds of efforts with the local businesses, and we handed her a lot of jobs right off the, right off the bat. And she has a Facebook page, and she is interested in doing what she can to bring some new enthusiasm. So at the moment, businesses, if they wish to, you know, look at the Irvington Chamber of Commerce Facebook page, or if you can't find it, certainly, you know, come back to...
We have a link to it on the Village site.
Yeah, it's on the Village site, too. They, you could be a member without fees yet at the beginning of this process. Eventually, you know, a Chamber of Commerce in order to do things does need to have some kind of structure to keep their work going. The other part of my downtown activities has to do with the Third Thursdays, which is, you know, an ongoing event. Some people have fallen out of the email, but those, there will be a Third Thursday in June. You can look at your calendar to see what the date is, it's the 16th, I believe, and at that, we'll actually be doing a little preview of what the Celebrate Irvington Day will be. So if you, there'll be some new things, some things that the school will be involved in, some things that the business community will be involved in. It's an ongoing project, as you know. Historic, just haven't met with them recently, so I think that's, that's it. I might have forgotten something, but take it away. I'll come back if I think of it.
They repaired a drainage problem in Sycamore Lane by really upgrading the catch basin and drainage pipes, and tied it into our existing drainage system, cleaned and trimmed the aqueduct parking lot, and as usual, assisting the Nature Center, the Water Department, filling potholes, line a crosswalk, painting, cleaning catch basins, cutting and trimming the parade route, so that will be also to march on Monday. Also, for those of you who, like me, may be doing either spring cleaning or welcoming home your college students, and you have, are faced with clothing, towels, linens that are no longer even durable, that is called linens, and you can make an appointment to have DPW pick this up as recycling. So didn't make the connection to towels or sheets and linens, but they will do that, just make an appointment with Greg. Water Department is reading meters, installing radio transmitters, spring maintenance of all the Water Department properties, lowering the reservoir due to recent rain, hydrant, flushing, and installing a new fire main street. The one other thing I would like to report on, in response to an invitation by this board, Chuck Resnick and Trevor Anders, I believe, from the New York State Homes and Community Renewal Agency, who had presented here about the SCREE and DREE program, senior citizen rent increase exemption and disability rent increase exemption, made a presentation at the Senior Center on Wednesday. There were about a dozen people in attendance, and the important point to note, while none of those individuals were eligible, they were all very interested to know about this program, and it was a very user-friendly presentation, and that information is available. People need only contact John Armstrong to find out more about it. But this board has set and raised the income limit to $40,000, so any senior over the age of 62 or disabled person making that amount or less who is paying a third or more of their monthly income as rent is eligible for these exemptions and should certainly check it out.
Thank you. Will you introduce your report?
Just a quick heads up, in addition to what trustee Silverberg mentioned in the DPW report, the DPW was very busy working with our engineers to prepare road resurfacing study. It's a comprehensive report that outlines the conditions of all of the roads in Irvington, assigns them numeric scores on their condition, and then prioritizes, estimates construction, repave costs, and prioritizes the roads in sequence to be incorporated into our capital budget. So that report will be, of course, sent to you shortly, but will also be posted on the Village website. It's certainly more than public, and, you know, it's interesting, interesting information. The one nugget that's in there is that if the Village spends $200,000 a year, adjusted for inflation going forward, it will be able to resurface all of its roads in 24 years, which is a little high, but not terribly high, actually. It's not bad, but, so we probably need a little more than 200,000, but not terribly much more.
Question on that, so if you have, like, for example, earlier tonight, you read a letter from the Walking School Bus, talking about dangerous conditions or repaving or curbing necessary in Madison Road, would that be considered in prioritization as you're developing the schedule?
The engineers did the primary evaluation of the roads, so they surveyed and reviewed the conditions of all the roads and, and assigned them scores. Now, if there's a condition that they missed, certainly that would be relooked at, but...
Or if it wasn't a public road?
Yeah.
But if there's a different level of use, perhaps, than they knew about while they were doing the survey simply based on...
It could be reevaluated, sure, yeah. We think we got it right, but of course, you never know. That's it.
Will start treasurer report?
We're coming to the end of our fiscal year. I just want to mention that tax bills will be going out on June 1, and that first half of the taxes due, the deadline for that penalty free would be by June 30.
I've got mine already.
The bill went out.
Yeah.
But then they were due by June 30.
Yes. But you said they were going out June...
Well, I guess we were...
They said to me, thanks.
Everybody else. She sent you hers express mail.
I'm so close. Thanks, Brenda.
Public comment?
Hi, Christine Wall, 58 West Clinton Avenue, and I'd like to echo Joe Branda Wine's sentiment about the solar panels. Thank you very much, that was very encouraging, your discussion last, last work session, so that was really great news. And also the Sycamore Lane thing getting fixed, that's wonderful news, too. If you wait long enough, it will happen, which brings me to the dangerous condition on the sidewalk of the private portion of Downs Lane. We talked about this two years ago. Two entire school years have gone by. I know it's a tricky situation because you're a private community. I know there's a water line and there's an issue with that hydrant. I know we talked to the Fire Department, they said that hydrant is not essential, that they can get to Downs Lane other ways. So even though that hydrant looks broken and scary, it might not be, but that sidewalk is impassable. And if you try to walk in, the little kid's going to twist their ankle and just send your backup. Then you hit down the street and get hit by a car. So we really need to find a way to talk to those private residents and make this happen, Brian. I know it's really a tricky situation, but...
The school has contacted multiple times. They live in Florida now, so that's, I think that's part of the problem, too, is they're not even there. But we can't really figure out a legal way to compel them to do it, because it's like, you know, we're saying you have to fix your driveway.
I think that we should do what we tried to do before, which is just fix it and pave it, let them come after us. Then we'll find out who they are. If we can't find them, make them come after us, and then sue us for making a safe sidewalk for our kids.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
Say one more time, PSA. PSA Video Festival through, submission deadline is June 10th, 6th grade to 12th grade, is walking safe, pedestrian safety. Information is online at Slow Down Irvington Facebook page, or you can write to slowdownirvington@gmail.com. Thank you.
Turn action, actually. Well, there was one, you know, forwarding an email to the Traffic Committee that Mark brought up, that's the email from Maura, I'll take care of. I mean, the rest of it, I've got all the additions to the capital budget, I'm not...
Maybe speak to sustainable Westchester at some point.
Make a motion adjourned to executive session regarding pending legal matter, just a second?
Second.
And I'm sorry.